This conference will now be recorded.
I would like to call the Committee of Whole to Order on October 6, 2020 at 6:47 PM. Present are council members Bressard, Schuman, Limbert, Heeman, Glassburn, Ali, Mayor Kennedy, Finance Director Copter, Clerk of Council Maserolo, and our guests this evening. I'd like to begin the Committee of the Whole with a COVID funding update. Council should have seen the administration's response to the questions regarding COVID funding from the last committee of the whole meeting a few weeks ago. So I'll start tonight's meeting by asking if there's any additional updates that the administration wishes to provide counsel before opening it up to general questions from council members.
Madam President, I think my office also sent you some other stuff just regarding the air units as well as the temperature things. So yeah, we'll just take any questions you guys might have.
Thank you. Council members, any questions regarding COVID funding? Councilwoman Glassburn.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would probably have better articulated questions if we had not received the latest numbers less than an hour before this meeting. It was this administration within the last two weeks that complained that we provided a set of questions regarding the sign code changes with just under two business days notice, and yet we continue to get documents over and over and over again, two hours or less, one hour or less before these meetings. It's not productive, it's not helpful. You know, I've not had a chance to look at these numbers yet because I just got home from work. I'm not a full-time employee of the city. And it's just, it's very upsetting, Council President. As to an actual question, it appears that based on what I saw of the Ohio Municipal League presentation and what I've seen elsewhere, that we can more or less attribute all of this money to salary of safety employees and items that we need to address COVID directly for PPE and building changes. So if that is the case, and that is agreed upon as the understanding, I think we have to look at this money as if it is money that's coming out of the general fund and not treat it like it's some kind of grant in our mindset. And when we see spending for an item, I think you have to say to yourself, you know, this $10,000, this $20,000, this $30,000 item, you know, which employees are you willing to do without, or what program you're willing to do without? Because that money could be going there. So I guess that's somewhat of a, the question is, is that, is the criteria understood the same way by the administration? And if it's not up to fully the amount that we have been awarded that could be attributed to salaries, then where are we at in terms of what's the maximum number for that attribution?
Yeah, Madam President?
Mayor Kennedy.
Yeah, oh, I think the original guidance was clear to not, to not say that. I mean, it said you could not use anything in your budget, even overtime. But I just think that cities, you know, we're pressuring, you know, federal officials to say, hey, we need this money for really next year's budget, you know, so if we can attribute it to our safety forces, we can kind of push it back to next year. I'd be all in favor of that. I agree with you that, you know, next year's going to be an important year. We're negotiating contracts right now. We're negotiating, you know, with 0% raises. So I completely agree, you know. But that certainly wasn't the original guidance. And guidance has kind of changed on this last round of funding, I think, because cities are talking to the federal officials.
Let the record reflect that Councilwoman Williamson has joined us, and then also Finance Director Copter is experiencing technical difficulties and will hopefully be back on with us shortly. I'm sorry, Councilwoman Glassburn, to interrupt your line of questioning, did you have further questions?
No. The clarification that was issued by the federal government on, on or about October 23rd, 24th, that at least I got the presentation from the Ohio Municipal League on, on the 25th, that Friday, is pretty clear that we can go all the way with our safety forces, folks. And we spend more than what we've been awarded for those folks on an annual basis. So I don't fault the mayor for not having the technical on that. Maybe the Finance Director, when she's able to join us, can address what her specific interpretation is, is the ceiling for which we can attribute these funds to salaries, whether it's be it the 15% that she guesstimated the last time we discussed on this topic, or some other formula that she's arrived to as to what, what is the maximum amount? So that we can value that against our other spending decisions in this package. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam President?
Director Copter?
Okay, so you can hear me. Okay, good. Sorry. I was just on, you know, we all have these little things, and the auditor state who's going to be auditing and is the ultimate interpreter of the Treasury regulations, said that, that you still need to have for safety forces, they don't believe it's all in. They believe that you have to have some methodology, or statistics, or, or something behind why you're saying that these people, or this much of them, is COVID or not. So they did like the EMS runs total because, and we can include that with police, because they could see that, that probably our population, we could allocate that to saying, well, if this many EMS runs have it, probably anytime the police go on a call, it's probably the same relationship. So they thought that that would be okay. And they said also just today that, that while we don't have final guidance from Treasury, they keep updating and revising, and they could be doing it all the way up until we're done, and then it's too late to spend it on anything else. So, so while it makes my life easier to just say, yeah, safety forces, I'm still working the angle of statistics, I'm still keeping track of those things so that we don't leave any dollars on the table. So I just, I just wanted to let you know the latest that I had heard. One other thing is that the, that the incumbents has moved to November 20th, as we had talked about, but the goods or services must be received by December 30th, but we could pay for it in 2021. So we have to receive the goods or services, but if we're still in the process of making the payment on it in 2021, then that's okay. So that was a new thing that I learned today as well. Is anyone talking? Because I couldn't hear anyone. All right, good.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Again, I'm going to send around via the council email, but also put in the chat the presentation from the Ohio Office of Budget Management, the Ohio Municipal League, and the Ohio Township Association, which says, said specifically what I've said previously, but as you, as the Finance Director understands the rules to the best of her knowledge now, what number, what is the ceiling to which we can attribute funds for the city of North Olmsted to salaries?
Madam President?
Director Copter?
I don't have, I don't have what the ceiling would be. So I just have what my estimates are for the remainder of the year, which I provided at the last meeting. And that came up to like 1.4 million.
And what was provided right before this meeting?
It's just an update because there were some prices in the fire, the fire department's requests, but they hadn't had pricing. So I just am trying to keep this spreadsheet updated to what the running total of dollars remaining, so that we don't leave any on the table.
Madam President, I guess what I'm hesitant to rely on about the numbers we received previously was at the time, it was represented that those were guesstimates, that those were unrefined and broad-based generalization, so that we could have a rough idea, and that we would have a more specific idea, or at least itemized to reflect how we understand it for the city, based on our employees and salaries, et cetera. Again, I understand that the federal guidance has been very fluffy, but knowing what that hard number is, to the best that we can compute it, I think is very relevant to us deciding how to spend these funds. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair.
Thank you. Director Copter?
I guess, I guess I'm confused because we've committed a lot of dollars already, which I have allocated, leaving 1.178, where it says third round potential and any unspent prior grant dollars. And, you know, the, there may be like, say, your mask, which I don't know what the final amount would be, you know, that might change somewhat. But I know that the remaining dollars that haven't been otherwise committed, I can more than account for in wages and benefits. So that, I guess that's where, and, and the dollars were reflected through September. But, I mean, I have to estimate for the remaining part of the year. So I can't give you a hard and fast number because I don't know that number until December 30th. So, but I know that I will make sure every wage and benefit will equal whatever we have left that we haven't already otherwise committed. So I guess my question is, is that not a relevant point?
If I can take this one, thank you, Council President Jones. Mr. Glassburn, I think I can answer this question for you. I mean, our fire and police budget are about 5 million each, so there's plenty of room in there. Again, what I thought when we were getting federal money, I was like, yeah, let's kick it back to next year and, and, you know, that way we can, you know, do any of these valuable projects on our own time and stabilize the budget for next year. That would have been great. But the guidance was clear that that wasn't what you do with the money. The guidance has kind of changed, and I would, I would be in favor of holding as much money in next year's budget, or put it towards safety forces and take the money out of the budget and stabilize things for next year. If that's, if that's kind of the question you're asking. Chris?
Yes, that's what I'm driving to.
Yeah, well, we would, I would have been in favor of that from the beginning, but the guidance was so crystal clear that you weren't allowed to use money that was already in your budget, not even for overtime. But I think because cities have complained so much and said, look, we can't even get these projects done, let alone, you know, if they're valuable, we can't even get them done, that I think the federal funds are, as it comes out, are getting a little more laid back. If it was up to me, and I could do anything that I wanted with this money, I would be kicking it all back to next year. I'd be putting it all towards safety and moving what we had in safety and safety back to next, back to 2021. But the guidance was-
Me too. Carrie Copter thoroughly agrees. That would have been my first choice.
And it sounds like- And Chris, that's, that's what you would say, that that would be a wise choice, right? Is that what you're getting at?
More or less, yes. And for the things that have not been spent, to very carefully, there may be a handful of things that we all still think should go forward, but if there are things that we don't believe rise to that level of, of a standard of spending it against general fund revenues, then we should very seriously reconsider whether we're going to keep going ahead with whatever those items are.
Absolutely. I would say with the caveat is that we can always do these projects, right? I mean, if it's going towards next year, if it's a valuable project, we can always do it next year without being pressured and having, you know, having to hustle. And again, there's a lot of construction going on in different cities because they're trying to spend this money or lose it because of the original guidance. So it's tough to even find a construction company to take on some of these things. So I, I wholeheartedly agree with you. The difference is the guidance has changed. Now, what will the guidance say when we're done? Last thing we want to do is give back money, you know?
I'll yield, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Councilman Limbert?
Yeah, first I want to thank Mr. Glassburn for kind of leading us down this road, and the mayor for, you know, informing his priorities as clearly as possible. I think, I think from now, we all understand that guidance has been changing over time. So I guess we don't have to rehash what we decided when we understood the clear guidance that has now changed. I guess my question is what Mr. Glassburn pointed. So what is our flexibility of what things could potentially not be done and, and be moved to either next year or be applied to salary under the current phase and the current understanding of the guidance that we have without, you know, too much risk that somehow that's going to change and we're going to, you know, lose that ability and then be stuck with a bunch of money, right? That's, that's kind of what the decision and the questions that we're asking is. So, so what, what is available right now of the projects that haven't been committed to that would, would make sense to look at that from a salary perspective? Or Carrie, are you saying that, that salary has to go for the, you know, the proposed third, third phase?
No, I mean, as the mayor so eloquently put, I wholeheartedly agree that if, if we had known that we could use the monies for wages and benefits that were already in the budget and that were just safety forces without any relevance to what they've had to do for substantially, being substantially COVID-related tasks, then I would have used all of it for that if that had been my preference as well. But the things that are, that, I mean, we've talked about for a while are pretty much already done. I mean, under the first section, the proposed use, I mean, those are already done, or except for like yours, the live meeting, streaming and agenda management, and then when the masks close out, I believe that it's going to be less. So I mean, there's a few thousand dollars there. But the-
Carrie, I think, I think what Dwayne is looking for is a number. You know, I think, I think the 1.4 number might, might be the number that he's looking for. I think he's looking for a number.
Okay, well, I'm just-
Yeah.
I'm sorry, it's hard when I'm not like, I'm looking and trying to talk into my phone. I apologize. The section that has Phase 2, the 211, 553, 73, those have not been ordered yet. Those are the fire chiefs and the fire safety committee's recommendations. So if someone wants to go through those and whittle that down, you know, that, that's fine. And then the rest are just wages and benefits. So, so say 220 is uncommitted?
Okay. So that answered my question, Council President Jones. I mean, I guess that would be a question of how we'd want to have that conversation and whether that's something we need to do in the meeting, or, or have, you know, the clerk come back with proposals to then talk about in the meeting? If other council people are kind of agreeing that 200 should be looked differently?
Madam Chair, I just, I just request that to make a decision quickly, because some of this stuff has to get ordered, and so that's all I'm asking.
We, we understand. But I think that the, that the council also needs solid numbers in front of them in order to have a productive conversation then to, to vote on something as well. So, so understanding the necessity to make decisions quickly, I think that what would be productive and helpful then is for the administration to come back to us with those numbers, with the new guidance that you've received, so that the council then could, could make that decision. I understand that we have just a few short weeks to make those decisions. And Councilman Glassburn, and then Councilman Limbert?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I was going to suggest that the administration, it might be most appropriate for them to huddle with the fire chief if most of these items are driven by his or a committee led by him's recommendations, to decide which, because these are items that are health-related, to decide which items are our best meetings, the standard that we're considering versus those that might be better suited to, for consideration next year. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Limbert?
Yeah, and just my, my point was, I think the Finance Director said it, that for salary, it could be 1.4, right? Is what the number you had projected was, and you have 1.178 on here for third round and 200,000. So isn't that all? I mean, we could theoretically, all of this could go towards your salary projections? The 200,000?
That's why, yeah. And I mean, these are, these are prices that they've received. So the 211 are solid numbers as to what the costs are. I don't have any estimates in that piece. So I've gotten all the numbers. So that's why this is updated, to include those.
Okay, so I think we have that answer, I guess, is what it sounds like. We, we have the number of up to 1.4, and then it would just be a question of are any of these more valuable than going towards salary? Given the current state? That's my understanding. So I just wanted to clarify that, because I think we have that answer from the Finance Director of how much money we could, you know, reallocate.
And if I could comment, Madam President?
Mayor?
Yeah, I would also say that, look, I mean, we can do anything we want next year, you know, I mean, so if you move this all towards salary, we can, we can do whatever it takes, and we can breathe a little bit and not feel the pressure of, oh, it's got to get done and paid for by the end of the year. So I'm all in favor of pushing the 1.4 towards salary and benefits, unless there's something, you know, absolutely, that's a necessity.
Councilmembers, if you could indicate at this point, if that is a direction that you are interested in seeing the city move in, or if you need additional time, I would appreciate knowing that so that we can, we have a few other topics that we need to discuss at tonight's Committee of the Whole meeting. Councilman Glassburn?
Madam President, I may see this differently than others, but I see it as we have two buckets. We have the bucket of the two council items that we've been working on, that I think we're more or less prepared to discuss tonight. And then there's the bucket of what's in the Phase 2. And I think for the Phase 2, having the information again from the fire chief or his committee as to which one, which one of those are essential for now versus next year's consideration, really is, we need that feedback in order to make an educated decision as opposed to us arbitrarily deciding which of these safety items appear imminently necessary and which ones can wait.
Madam Chair, I will get with, I will get with the fire chief and the mayor, and we will get that for you.
Madam President, if I could say one more thing?
Mayor?
Also, I want to let council know that in speaking to a lot of different mayors here, everyone has the same comments. This guidance is clear as well. You know, no one can tell you exactly. So take that, you know, take everything you hear, maybe with a little bit of a grain of salt, but I mean, there's mayors that have, that are pushing the envelope, and there's some that aren't. But, you know, if we can, if we can certainly put this towards our safety, safety forces and bump things back to 2021, that would be, that would be good for the city.
Thank you. So at this point, then, I would like to move forward in our discussion on which options council wishes to choose to move forward with. I'd like to get a consensus of council. If council would like to start streaming our meetings regularly on the internet, that is something, in my opinion, it's time to move in this direction. We don't need to take a formal vote on the floor of council for this, but I did want to get a consensus with all of council to know if there are any concerns or objections to screaming, to streaming council meetings, regardless of what option we, we choose, you know, who we decide to go with. I would like to know, though, is, is the majority of council in favor of streaming our council meetings? I see Councilwoman Heeman, Councilman Limbert, Councilman Kelly, Councilman Glassburn, Councilwoman Williamson, Councilman Schuman, and Councilman Bressard have all indicated in some form to me via my webcam that they are in favor of streaming council meetings. So thank you for that. And now that we know that we are going to be streaming at some point moving forward here, I would like to turn our attention to the email that Clerk Maserolo had sent to all of council last week. We, we need to determine if we just want to do streaming, or streaming with either an agenda, agenda management, or a community engagement platform. Our clerk has recommended that we consider doing streaming with agenda management as, as it, up until this point, could have been covered under the COVID money just for this year, though. And, and giving our residents access to legislation, engaging them prior to our meetings, it's, it's not only timely, but clearly the direction that everyone's headed in, not just because of the current pandemic situation, but that's just the way that the world is, is evolving into. I definitely agree with our clerk in that respect, and, and I understand that this will, if we move in this direction, that it will require buy-in from the administration along with changing our legislative requests and agenda release date timelines. But I believe that it's something worth committing to and seeing how it goes. Clerk Maserolo, did you want to say anything additional to council at this point regarding your recommendation?
The only thing I want to say is that I talked with Director Copter this afternoon. She got off the phone with, or webinar with the state auditors, as she's mentioned, and they have updated their guidance a little bit, where we would not be able to use CARES Act funding to, for the program itself outside of this year. So if we did move, we can use it for the equipment still, and we can use it for the, if we decide to go forward with a company like People Speak, we could use it for the end of this year, but we could not, even if we- we could use it for the end of this year, but we could not, even if we paid a year in advance, we would have to budget for the money for next year. If that makes sense.
Yes. Councilmembers, any questions? Councilwoman Heeman.
Thank you, Madam President. I am have always been in favor of having the public be as involved as they can be in our government and our meetings. I do like People Speak. It permits us to invoke the ability to have resident participation in advance of our meetings. It offers a better sense of communication on the issues with the public. So I very much did like that presentation. And I like the multifaceted things that it offers to us, the agenda management, the community engagement. And, you know, all of its components. And I think that to limit ourselves to just maybe live streaming on Facebook or something like that would be a mistake while we have the opportunity to do more now. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional thoughts? Councilman Limbert.
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. For me, I'm still kind of in favor of. I mean, it's great that we could potentially have that funding to do do a solution, but it from the previous conversation, it looks like we have other avenues for that funding. And we are committing now to an ongoing subscription. And then once you engage a vendor, you know, you're going to be with them for a while. And I feel like we're still learning in this space and there's avenues out there that could be at a less cost to allow us to do that learning and then, you know, readdress this where all of us are a little bit more knowledgeable as as users of what what's beneficial and what's not to make a more costlier commitment with all of us a little bit more experienced in these solutions. So that's just my thought.
Thank you, Councilman Schuman.
Thank you, Madam President. I agree with Mr. Limbert. If we're going to ask the safety services to take a look at you know, their list and things, we asked them to pare it down. I think we could be paring down what we spend out of this money, too. Might as well have it go toward salaries and give us a little bit of room for next year. Just, I agree. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Kelly.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm also in agreement that we keep this as low cost as we can right now. Especially with the all the COVID stuff going on, the income is a little bit less because of it and all that. I would just assume to keep it less expensive. Thank you.
Thank you. So Clerk Maserolo, one thing, and so in addition to, in order for, I guess I should say, in order for us to to have the ability to stream our council meetings and our committee meetings, we the first thing that we would need to to do is to purchase some equipment in order to have that happen. So so that's the first thing that needs to happen. And then, like many of our council members are suggesting, if if the agenda management or the community engagement piece needs to be looked at separately, that's fine because we still need that equipment in order to to accomplish our first task, which is streaming our our council meetings. Is is that correct, Clerk Maserolo?
Correct. In order to stream our council meetings, we would need to have cameras. And then we would need to have an internet connection to upload it. And then we would need to have an encoder that can encode the camera into the signal of where we're streaming to. So there are a couple of options in that regard. I mean, there's the ones that I've looked at and recommended would be, we either use the Mevo camera, which comes with an encoder in it. That camera does not require any additional software, any additional support. It would stream everything directly. And then that we would just need to buy the cameras. My concern with that one, though, is the battery life. And I need to make sure with our IT department, depending on where we put the camera, if that will work where it's supposed to go. The other option is we can buy whatever camera we want. We can buy any sort of camera anywhere we want, but then we need to have an encoder if the camera does not come with an encoder. And that's where something like BoxCast, and there are other companies out there, come along where they provide you the encoder and you pay them a fee. And I believe that BoxCast, when I looked at, I pulled up here really quick, but I believe it was $199 a month. And they allow you to use their coder encoding software and they broadcast it out to wherever we want it to go at that time. And then that obviously includes technical support and things like that. If we bought a camera with encoder on our own, we wouldn't get any back backend technical support or any of that type of any of that type of stuff.
And Councilwoman Williamson.
Thank you, Madam President. I I wouldn't mind holding off on this, but my concern is, too, if we do go through with the purchase of the cameras, what does that do later on if we do decide to go with an agenda management company? Will it will we need to repurchase new equipment or the equipment that we buy now will still be good later for those for the agenda management software? Can does anyone know? Do you know?
Go ahead, Council.
Madam President, Councilwoman Williamson. My understanding from talking to companies are that they can pretty much work with anything. They have their recommendations. So like People Speak recommended the Mevo cameras because it includes the encoder and everything in it. And they know it works with theirs. They have multiple cities using them. But and they they have companies, all of these companies have companies they like and companies they don't. But as long as the encoder, as long as the stuff's getting out to a stream somewhere, they should be able to put it in their software. There could be some kinks and things like that down the road, but it sounds like they're able to work with most of what we decided to go forward with.
Councilman Limbert.
Yeah, thank you. That's a great question, Ms. Williamson. But on that note, I think having having a camera that has an encoder where we don't have to pay a subscription fee would probably be be a good option in that it would set us up for future. And then I would think you would have some leverage to strongly encourage different vendors to be compatible with those encoders. You know, so I think I think having that, I don't I don't foresee that being a big issue, but certainly it'd be good to get a follow-up from our IT department on that. I'm just hesitant to have anything that has a subscription based fee that we're going to have to pay annually that could change and increase. And then, you know, as we get familiar and comfortable with a specific way and and grow the public and, you know, understanding that line of communication that, you know, you're having a hard time changing your different solution.
Councilman Glassburn.
Thank you, Madam President. Having not weighed in, I'll preface by saying that I think the long-term direction is for us to utilize programming like the agenda management software. I do think that the revised criteria by the federal government puts a really heavy weight against any any purchase or use with the COVID money. With that said, I think there's there's a few pieces of information that that I'd like to throw out there and then also to ask. First to ask is I assume nothing has changed about us returning to chambers until the 10% limit is lifted. Is there any further direction, instruction that anyone is aware of on that?
That was mentioned by the mayor to us at a previous meeting. Mayor.
Yeah, I would just say, yeah, that's that's the that's the big thing that's holding us back from, you know, you can have a wedding. But, you know, you can't have 10 people at a meeting and it's impossible to hold a public meeting if you're going to kick people out, you know. So I would love to get get back in into a normal meeting schedule, but as soon as that's lifted, I think then it's up to you, really. It's really more up to you guys. It's your council meeting. But I think that's the guidance you're looking for to change.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. And perhaps we'll have to revise. I know the mayor has the ability to I believe the mayor at least has the ability to marry folks and that we'd love a bunch of young couples to come to the city. And I don't know that we could schedule one every two weeks or every week for the mayor to provide services during our meetings. But jokes aside, I I think Councilman Limbert's point about purchasing cameras that have encoders in them is useful. There are, there's programming that is less expensive than BoxCast that can fulfill the encoding function. I think we have, we have two main points we have to consider, which is Chuck's right that there's there's, it's going to be problematic for us to manage these things without either a program or professional support if we are broadcasting on more than one platform simultaneously. So we could have a live feed that is either on our site or on Facebook or some other platform and it could be rebroadcast on YouTube. But we can't, we can't interact functionally. We're just not set up to be broadcast on Facebook and YouTube and everything and for people to be able to interact with those and for Chuck to be able to give us the feedback from those interactions. It's just not feasible. So realistically, if we're if we're looking at, again, more of a single rebroadcast Facebook or YouTube, Allah, what the school board has done. I my personal opinion is that we'd be better off making the one-time investment in quality equipment that's going to be yeah. It's going to be able to work with whatever we get. It's I I'm trying to find the right words to explain why, but there's not, there's not technologically going to be a reason why these cameras can't work with these agenda management software applications. It's it's sort of like you how you can buy almost any webcam to work with your computer. So I'll stop for the moment.
Thank you. Clerk Maserolo.
Council President Jones and Councilman Glassburn, just to kind of follow up on the question about returning to chambers. If we do buy the streaming equipment and we do get that set up, we could potentially return to chambers while our chambers remain closed to the public and they're broadcast that way. So there would be a potential that we would be able to stop meeting this way and allow the public to follow on a single stream while we're all in one location, if that is counsel's desire.
Councilwoman Heeman.
And Chair. Clerk Maserolo, can you tell us the cost of the cameras with the encoders? I don't, I'm sure you told us, but I don't remember now.
Give me one second, I'll follow it up for you. The the cameras that are recommend, the Mevo cameras which have an encoder in it, those would be $400 apiece. And then we would also need to look at buying mounts and stands for them. So I would look at probably about an additional $100 for each mount and stand that we need to buy. If we wanted to look at cameras that do not have encoders and use, and even if we use a different program other than BoxCast, as there are as Councilman Glassburn pointed out, there are cheaper ones out there. The cameras that come without encoders are the ones that I was looking at were around 250 each. And then we'd need to buy, obviously, again, mounts or stands for them, but then we would need to come up with some way to encode. So there would have to be an additional cost at that point. So if we go with ones that were encoders, I'd say we're looking at about $500 or, yeah, $500 apiece.
Councilwoman Heeman.
Thank you, Madam President. So so roughly, you know, for less than $2,000, right? We could have a camera, backup camera, and sort of be doing this. Would would that be correct?
Correct. And I apologize, I said $500. The ones I was looking at were $399. I apologize for adding an extra 100 bucks to it. But yeah.
So essentially, and you would want, I would assume we would want a backup camera or is it your recommendation for two or for three?
I proposed two, so we could have one for chambers and we could have one for caucus. So we could also stream our caucus meeting. We could add a third if we wanted to, but I would do at least two, so we have one for each room.
So again, you know, less than $2,000. Thank you.
Councilman Glassburn.
So I'll slightly contradict the spirit of everything I've said to this point and suggest that I think that if we're going to purchase a specific set of cameras, that we consider looking at three. Because this is the kind of thing, we're going to want all of these to work the same way. We're not going to want to have to monkey around with two different things from two different eras. And the reason I say three is one for caucus, one for us. But we have to remember, we're a pretty wide group in that room. And so that camera to encapsulate all of us and then turn and encapsulate a speaker at the podium would be a lot to to put into one field of view for a single camera that we might want to have a third that either we utilize both at a later time when we have more sophisticated equipment to switch back and forth or as a, as again said, as a backup. So. So I suppose I am the the vice chair of the committee of the whole as the speaker or speaker, that's the president pretend. So Councilwoman Williamson, please go ahead.
Where am I? I don't even know what's going. Okay, here I am. Thank you, Councilman Glassburn and Councilwoman Williamson.
Thank you. My question was maybe could our our own internal IT department kind of determine where the cameras would would be placed or could be placed and maybe give us an idea of how many cameras we would need? Is that something that we could do and then have a better idea of what we're looking at?
Madam President.
Go ahead, Clerk. And then Mayor.
We would be able to assist in any way we possibly could. I mean, I I'm not sure they're camera experts. Maybe maybe, you know, the people who are buying the camera from would be the best people for that, but we would certainly assist in any way we could.
I have huge faith in Eric.
He's very good.
To follow up on what the that I've talked with IT about these, they've recommended that we move forward in the direction that we want to move forward and that they would find a way to make it work with what we want to do and what what their systems are.
Councilman Kelly.
Thank you. So looking at the email from her council clerk with the Mevo cameras and the stand and the mounts and the whole bit, by adding a third camera, it looks like it will come up to just about $2,000, give or take a hundred or two maybe by the time we figure it all out. And would that be pretty accurate, Chuck?
Yes, that'd be pretty accurate. And I leave a little bit of wiggle room there just for some kinks or some wiring or something we don't expect to come up. But yeah.
Because your email said for the for the the things we're talking about right now would be $1,353.97 to do two, so they had a third would probably take us up to about that. Thank you.
Councilman Glassburn.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I meant to, when I was asking the questions about when we return to council chambers, partially say that I think this is a partly a decision about fulfilling the being able to broadcast if we ever wanted to return to chambers for without the public, but to at least be able to see each other a little better when we're when we're doing these matters. The other thing I'll mention is county council does broadcast their meetings. If I recall correctly, and it's been a while since I've I've been there, they do not only do they have an 11-member board, but they have a similar set of tables on each side to where we have our administration. They utilize three cameras for the 11 members. I think that's probably overkill for us. But but having one dedicated to you know, the council and one dedicated towards being able to rotate between other others might might be wise. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Heeman.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I think a third camera is a good idea because, you know, what if there's downtime or something happens with or something happens with one of our others? I don't think it's a bad idea to have a backup. And again, you know, $2,000 is, is not a lot to be able to have our residents participate. Thank you.
So is it my understanding then, and if I could have a show of hands, or some form of indication to me, that the majority of council would like for us to then go ahead and purchase the, the needed cameras with encoders and equipment, three, to get us streaming for these, this next year, and not include, at this point, the agenda management slash community engagement piece? So I'm seeing all of council is indicating that that is the direction that they would like to move in at this point. So then, thank you. And I would like to ask then Clerk Mazorolo, if we could move forward with those purchases, if you would keep counsel abreast of what you're doing. And Councilman Glassberg, you have a question, and then Councilwoman Williamson.
Yes, I'm sorry to interrupt, and I don't want to belabor discussion more than we need to. I do think there's probably a decision in between the two aspects we just decided on, which is whether we want to broadcast on multiple platforms or not, because if we are, then, again, we're going to need to do that, that BoxCast or another similar effort. And I think we should try to make a decision on that as well, if we can.
So you're, you're correct. We will need to make a decision on that piece. I'm being mindful of our time this evening, though, and seeing that we're about to move into caucus. That's the only reason why I would suggest then that we have that conversation then at another Committee of the Whole meeting, Councilman Glassberg. So just so you understand that, you're correct, we do have to make another decision. But, but at this point tonight, I think that, that I feel comfortable with at least knowing what, what our council wants and how to move forward, and we'll, we'll then get to that next step. And because I also know that Councilwoman Heeman wanted to give an update on the mask project as well before we move into caucus. Councilwoman Heeman.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I would like to report that there will be quite a big amount of money left over from the mask project. We actually returned, we had shipped the, the second authorization, but we did not use any of it. We returned it. They were, Joanne was generous and let us swap out some adult sizes for children's sizes as we needed, and they, then they took that whole second order back. So that was good. With regard to the first order, we had, I think, 4,500, Chuck, is that right, masks, 2,500 adult and 2,500 children. And we now have only 695 of children's sizes left. All of the others were distributed within the four, you know, the four distribution periods, and then I would say with then, another week after that, people would call. You know, there, there were things like that. I just, as a matter of fact, the other day, took some over to a resident because they called. So what I'd like to do with the leftover children's sizes, because those were really pretty tough to find, people were very appreciative, very grateful for having, you know, been given the masks, and in particular, children's sizes. So what I'd like to suggest, so long as nobody objects, with the 695 that are left over, is that we distribute them between our city schools for the little kids. We put some at the rec center, because I know that that's going to be opening, the ice rink will open, and they're just sort of then be left as a backup. So what happens, for example, I did get a report from St. Brendan's School that they, they only have adult masks because they weren't able to purchase children's masks through their regular medical suppliers kind of thing. So, so children would like sneeze on their mask and become all freaked out. So, so to give our schools and our rec center a supply of children's masks just for those purposes, I think would be a very nice gesture, unless, of course, somebody has an objection Is everybody okay with that? Yeah. And then, of course, they could be used at Tautown when that opens. I mean, you just, you know, whenever things open up over at the rec center, they are going to need them. So we will, I will distribute them, if you all don't care, just kind of in equal amounts, you know, for the little kids around the, the city. And thank you again for your support. I do want to say that even School Board President Grodin, you know, came to the event and passed masks out, and he even looked at me and said, oh, my gosh, I just can't believe how grateful and how appreciative the residents are for having been given this mask. So, thank you. And then, of course, there will be, so in essence, all we've really spent is $8,000. So there will be money left if we choose to reallocate to our cameras. You know, we can take it before returning it back, then, you know, to the general fund. So there's $42,000 that will be going back. So I, again, appreciate that. And, and perhaps that's the, the thing to do now, is to consider what we're purchasing in the way of our equipment, and then, you know, transfer that, and then the remainder go back. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Williamson.
Thank you, Madam President. I just had two comments, and maybe our council clerk could just get this information for us later, but I wanted to know what the additional cost would be to add an agenda management program to our cameras if we chose to do this sometime next year. And then, seeing that if we're going to just go the streaming route, would there be a monthly cost or a data limit to any of the platforms that we utilize? Those are the only two questions I have, but we could just get those answered the next time we convene, we reconvene for this. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you. If there's no objection, I will conclude our Committee of the Whole meeting at 7:44 PM. Thank you.